I want to open the Conservation Commission meeting of October, when is this, third? Executive session with the Select Board. They are a roll call of who's present. Michael Lesser, present. Courtney?
Courtney Act, present.
Kurt?
Kurt Stiegl, present.
Jacob?
Jacob Strauss, present.
Terry?
Terry Luskin, present.
Steve?
Steve Krumshaw, present.
I think I've got everybody. Oh, Matt?
Yep, Matt O'Leary, present.
Okay. All right. Okay.
All right, very good. Okay. So amongst the board, oh, actually, Jeremy, that's right, Town Administrator, please read the executive session portion of the agenda.
Sure, the agenda you have for this evening, October 3rd, 2024, you have three items in your executive session. Item one is a meeting with Town Council and members of the Conservation Commission and executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, 83, and Suffolk Construction versus DCAM, 449 Massachusetts 444, 2007, to discuss Phoenix Partners Farm Road LLC at all versus Town of Sherburne at all. Land Court number 24, miscellaneous 000433, and pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, specifically the Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter 4, Section 726, discuss privileged communications from Town Council RE litigation. Item two, you have a meeting with Town Council pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, potential litigation and Section 21A7 to comply with or act on the authority of the Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter 4, Section 726, and Suffolk Construction versus DCAM, 449 Massachusetts 444, 2007, discuss privileged communications with Town Council and attorney work product, Sherburne Public Library lost damage furniture claim. And your final item number three, discuss discussion regarding collective bargaining strategy for negotiations with AFSCME, or AFSCME Council 93, Local 335, the DPW bargaining unit pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3.
Very good. As Chair, I declare the executive session as warranted for the aforementioned agenda items, and I move that we move into executive section. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
All right, please turn off the recording right now in executive session.
Aren't you gonna vote?
Aye. Executive session went a little long, but in the big scale, things is not too bad, as we've done in the past. So all being said, it is 7:12 PM on October 3rd, 2024, and we are beginning the open session portion of the Sherburne Select Board meeting. All that being said, I'd like to ask the Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is your open session for October 3rd, 2024. Your open session has six agenda items. The first being the consideration of approval of the 2024 November election warrant. Jackie Morris, Town Clerk. Number two, the Sherburne County, Sherburne Community Center is seeking permission to play, from the Select Board, to place a permanent time capsule on the community center grounds. Item number three, consideration of Select Board meeting calendar for January through June 2025. Item four, consideration of ratifying CBA agreement between the Town of Sherburne and the Sherburne Department of Public Works, AFSCME Council 93, Local 335, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Item number five is the fiscal year 2026 budget development and 2025 annual town meeting, goals, initiatives, and challenges. Jeremy Marset, Town Administrator. Item number six, consideration of appointments, the first appointment being the Building Commissioner. Ralph Deery is a backup wiring inspector for a term to expire June 15th, 2027, and an appointment to the Public Safety Committee, Frank Jenkins, for a term to expire June 15th, 2027. Then you have consent agenda, including the Town Administrator payroll, Town Administrator's payroll warrant, draft meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2024, and September 5th, 2024, and a one-day liquor license for Sherbstock. You have select order reports and a Town Administrator report.
Thank you very much. Do I have any motions for all of you there?
I would make two, one adjustment. Jackie's gonna make a public announcement about early voting, the dates for early voting. So I would move approval of the agenda with the addition of a public announcement at the start.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
All right, Jackie, let's public announce things.
I just wanted everyone to know that early voting starts Saturday, October 19th. It'll be from 10 to 2, and then Monday through Friday will be 9 to 12, and then Saturday, Saturday, the 26th, it'll be 10 to 2, and then Monday through Friday until November 1st, it'll be 9 to 12. I have posted those hours and days on the website. And I also wanted to let everyone know that we got our ballots in Tuesday afternoon. We've probably sent out about 600 ballot packets already with probably another 500 or more to go. So everyone should be receiving their ballot packets hopefully this weekend and to next week. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. I always say this every time. I'm always proud that Sherman has some of the highest voter turnout in these presidential elections of any community. Excellent. Thank you, Jackie. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number one, consideration of approval of 2024 November election warrant. Jackie, again.
Yeah, I just asked that you guys approve the warrant as submitted to you and vote. I will be in the office if anyone wants tomorrow morning from 8 to 12. Come in and sign the warrant.
You broke up a little bit there for me. Did anyone else break up there a little bit? Do you mind saying that again, just because you broke up?
Okay, sorry. I just asked that you approve the warrant as submitted, and then I just ask, I just wanted to let you know that I will be in the office tomorrow from 8 until noon if any of the Select Board members would like to come in and sign the warrant.
Okay. Dan, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Eric. So I read over the, I read over the warrant, and I just saw two small things that seemed like maybe they're typos. Might be that they're intentional and just my misunderstanding, but just thought I'd briefly flag them. And, and, and again, you know, this is, if I'm out of bounds here, just tell me and I'll, I'll, I'll stop. But at the end of question four, after the summary, it looks like there's a space missing. And then at the end of question six, in contrast to the other questions, there isn't the statement of a yes vote would mean and a no vote would mean. It just goes, and maybe because it's a town thing, that's how it's meant to be, but it just, it just caught my eye reading it over.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Can you go on question four? Because basically, the warrant is submitted to us by the state, and the only thing that I have to do is add in Sherman Town Hall, the date, the time that we're going to be open, Middlesex Southern District, 8th Middlesex District, everything else. And then the only other thing I did was copy and paste the summary and the question for questions six.
Okay, so it may be, it may be irrelevant. I just, as I said, there were a couple of things reading over that just seemed like they were inconsistent across.
Yeah, there, on the ballot itself, there is no yes or no answer like this, like the state for the CPA. It's on the ballot, yes, and on the warrant, it's.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, and, and then question four, it looks like when the state put it together, they just missed, missed adding a extra space line.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, so that's great. I'm a little out of bounds. I just thought, you know, I still sometimes slip my professor hat on. I just, just can't help myself on that stuff. Thanks, Jackie.
That, if it makes you feel better, I can, I can fix, I can fix the space tomorrow.
Totally, totally up to you. I'm just, just flagging it. That's all.
I don't know how many people actually, actually pay attention to the warrant, but I am happy to fix the space. And so if the Select Board would approve the warrant with me adding the space, and that'll be great. I can do that tomorrow.
All right, and I'll recognize the other professor in this meeting. Yes, Mary Ann.
I didn't find any typos, just so you know. I have two questions. One is, Jackie, what's the deadline for us signing this thing?
It has to, I have to get, Ron Buckler is our constable, and he normally, he has to post it seven days in advance of the warrants, I mean, of the election, excuse me. So that would be at the 29th of October. So you, you have some time. We usually liked, I usually like to get him in at least a week before it's due, so that I'm not nervous that it's not going to.
Oh, yeah. No, I intend to get in soon. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you have a couple, you have at least a week or a couple of weeks. That's okay.
I have a second question. Is there still an opportunity to edit the text on the warrant of question six?
No.
Okay, okay.
That was put together, we had to submit that as, it was approved by Heather White. Yeah, and it had to be, I had to have it to the Secretary of State's office by like the 6th of September or something, or yeah.
Understood it. Yeah, it's my professor hat going on.
If I accommodate 30, will you be there tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll get in, I'll, I'll be in by 8 o'clock.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Welcome.
So can I do the motion?
Go ahead, Paul.
Will the way execute an issue for warrant as presented with a space added as requested by the Chair of Advisory?
Second.
All right, a motion, a second, all in favor? Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. Very good. Thank you so much, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, so now moving on, Sherman Community Center is seeking permission from the Select Board to place a permanent time capsule in the community center grounds. All the time capsules are never permanent. Usually opened 100 to 200 years later, but yes, I will move on that. So who's here to speak to that?
Sean and I can speak to this. This is a request to bury a time council. There's some information in your packet, a letter from the Community Center Foundation. There's a picture with an arrow pointing to the approximate location where they would like to put and bury this time capsule, capsule in the grounds. And then there's also a graphic of what this time capsule box would look like. I mean, you wouldn't see it, it'd be underground, but we thought it would be appropriate just to bring it forward to the Select Board in that it is, they're requested to bury this on, on public property, on town property. They have been in communication with Sean. He is going to actually do the, his folks are gonna do the digging for the installation. We've located where the underground utilities are. We have a pretty good idea where they are. One of the other reasons to have Sean's folks do that. We, we find no issue with the request. Sean, anything that I missed?
Oh, you nailed it. Other than, for those that don't know, the community center, the town only owns about a three-foot perimeter around the community center. So that's, we're pretty limited on where we can do it. It's a great place for it, but that's about the only place we can do it as well.
So what's gonna go in this box?
Hold on, I gotta recommend, remember, Paul, you have to raise your hand. It's proper rules. Stephen, please go ahead.
Same question, really. Yeah, just two clarifying questions. One is what is gonna go into it? And also, can you explain the in perpetuity part? Because I thought time capsules usually would be, would be, you know, oh, 50 years, 100 years or something like that. But what does in perpetuity mean? That it's never gonna be opened?
Don, go ahead.
I think for your purposes, there's a the crust of this is the Select Board's allowing the time capsule. So in, in theory, once they pull that time capsule, maybe they'd wanna put another one in. You're, you're basically giving, you're giving permission to have the space for the time capsule. Not so much when it's gonna be opened back up. I think they do have a, it's slated for the either 25 or 50 years from now, which I don't know how many of us are gonna be around for that celebration.
You know, I was just curious, because usually anytime a time capsule is, you know, announced or whatever, you know, they always say, how many years from now is it gonna be open? So I was just confused by the in perpetuity part.
Yeah, and I, and I think they're doing that, but I, I think you're giving it a piece of land for it to exist in perpetuity, because theory, maybe they bury it again for the 400.
This will be an event on December 14th, tentatively, is when, you know, the actual burial of the, the time capsule would occur. I'm sure there'll be some more announcements as far as what may go into it. Maybe there'll be some requests put out publicly, what might go, go into the, the box. But it's a kind of a joint thing with the Sherburne 350 Celebration Committee and the Sherburne Community Center Foundation to celebrate the 350th.
Okay, very good. Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
So my question was, who decides what goes into the time capsule?
I believe the two co-sponsors, unless you have an opinion otherwise.
So who are the two co-sponsors?
The Sherburne 350th Celebration Committee and the Sherburne Community Center Foundation.
Elliot, that sounds good. That sounds good enough to me. All right, any votes relative to this?
Yeah, move a provo.
All right, second. All right, all in favor? Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
They might as well. All right, very good. All right, number three, considerations, Select Board meeting calendar, January through June 2025. This can't be four, but they were offset on the every other week issue, and it looks like it's been corrected. Any questions or comments relative to the proposed Select Board meeting calendar? Any motions relative to it?
Move a provo.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, on favor, Stephen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I might as well. All right, on the next item here, consideration of ratifying, the CBA based the DPW collective bargaining agreement. We met in executive session, and I'm authorized to say that we're on board, and I think we're all in agreement with the terms, and what's happening, Sean and Jeremy have done a lot of good work in this. However, we do have to check the box. We have to have council review. So council's currently reviewing it. We hope to vote on it next week. And not just optimistic, it's just a formality that we're going through here. Any questions or comments relative to this? Okay. Very good. And again, thank you, Sean. Thank you, Jeremy, for the effort on this. All right, moving on to that, number five, FY26 budget development and 25, 2025 annual town meeting, goals, initiatives, and challenges. Jeremy?
Thank you, Eric. I'm gonna share a couple of things on the screen. You have some information in your packet, but I wanted to share first the budget calendar and then some other information. There we go. So this budget calendar is in your packet, but it lays out a budget cycle very similar to the way that the process was done last year. And, you know, with the voice concurrents, we could follow something similar to the way that we, we operated last year for the development of the FY26 operating budget and capital budgets. We sit right now, October 3rd, and at the first highlighted yellow. On the calendar, everything highlighted yellow are essentially actions for the Select Board, or when things would be brought formally back to the Select Board. Again, this follows the same, similar processes last year. So we sit here, October 3rd, and, or 3rd, I guess, my typo. And we would come back, I'd come back in a month from now, November 7th, to give a further update of where we are and talk more about goals and strategic needs and, and budget challenges. And then we would be going through all the departments and budget makers would be submitting through the Town Administrator and the Finance Director and compiling a budget, a consolidated budget as we did last year, working with, with Advisory. Advisory's dates here have not yet been set. That's why they're kind of crossed, crossed out with a question mark. Once Advisory does set up their schedule, which may follow similar timeframe, but the exact dates to be determined. I'll, I'll get those updated here. But essentially, you would see a consolidated budget for FY26 put together as it's submitted to the Advisory and Select Board on December 31st. And then you would get periodic budget updates after that, as the, as the budget gets refined. And then we propose to have your, essentially your Select Board Budget Review Meeting, you know, kind of your final votes of, of how you may support the Select Board budgets on March 6th. That's one of your regular scheduled meetings that you discussed in your last agenda. That would be essentially the week or so before when Advisory would typically have their public hearing. And, and so just wanted to kind of lay that out for you folks, get your thoughts. If you wanted any changes to that, or if you're on board with that general process for budget development.
Well, there is one question I would like to ask the board. Something comes up every single year, and I swear I've done it different ways, and there's almost, there's very strong opinions, which way to do it. As we, as different boards, boards come before us, is that what's showing? We're not doing, we're gonna do the Saturday with them, but we still have the different departments come before us. Whether we vote at that time, or we kind of vote after we've seen everything. I'd like, I guess I'd like some input as to what, what the preference is here. And I know it's very, it has been strong feelings in the past. Yeah, I'll say, I'll state my opinion is that, you know, they come before us, we look at it, and we can give good or bad vibes, we can discuss it. I like voting at the end. It winds up being right before the Advisory Hearing often, but that way, you know, if you have to change budgets, if something happens, you know, that's been my preference. Jeff, what, what's your thoughts?
Well, I would make a distinction. I think we should make a, I agree, actually, with what you said, but the distinction I would make is, I think we should treat the budgets that report to the Select Board, like police, fire, DPW, differently than all the other budgets. They actually are ones which we're sort of responsible for, because they report to the Town Administrator, the three heads of those departments. So I think we should, we, they could be in the same session or some other time, but I think we should treat them a little bit differently, and they're among the larger budgets after the school system. But other than that, I agree with you. I don't know that we need to vote till the end, you know, once we've gotten recommendations from Advisory and other, or at least listen to Advisory's public hearing.
I, yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's a very good point. Stephen, what are your thoughts?
I, I probably actually go kind of the opposite direction. And I don't know, that might be surprising, considering my background on Advisory. I mean, to me, there's two things at play. Number one is that, while I can, I can understand the the desire to see how everything is as a whole, which theoretically you can't do until you've seen every single budget. Once all the budgets requests are submitted, you know, and then in the first week of January, usually the Finance Director can put together a budget model version 1.0, which has the entire budget, and it's got all of the department's budget requests, you know, and you know, in theory, some of them might be outlandish and need a lot of work by Advisory. And that, I think, in the past was probably a reasonable reason to say, okay, well, Select Board, maybe we need to wait and look at each department individually before we, before, before we vote at the end. So the other thing that comes into play is that, you know, I know that before I was on Select Board, Dan and I met with Jeremy, and I believe that this was kind of, I believe this was part of the, the long-term goal of the search committee that hired Jeremy. There, there is a, a desire, I think, certainly on my part, I believe also on Dan's part, but Dan can contradict me if, if, if not true, for the Town Administrator to take more sort of ownership of the town's budget as a whole. Certainly, all of the budgets that are under the Select Board's purview. But to some degree also, I think it is helpful if he has, you know, the library and Board of Health and, you know, all the other elected board budgets also somewhat under his wing. The schools, I think, is a separate challenge for sure. But basically, that process that Jeremy has laid out in December 9th through the 20th, budget maker meetings with Town Administrator and Finance Director, that was a step that traditionally didn't happen prior to Jeremy being here. And so all of these departments were generating their own budgets, essentially in a silo. You know, when I was Chair, I tried to get the Advisory liaisons to at least be involved in those discussions in late December, but that was kind of spotty. For sure, I don't believe that the Town Administrator had a global view of the budget and was working with the, all the individual budget directors to, you know, get under guidance or have some kind of a strategic goal that they were all working towards. But I think that now, you know, I think Jeremy's been at this long enough where he understands where each of the departments sits and how their budgets operate. So that hopefully, by the first week of January, a lot of that paring down has already happened, and Jeremy has got a good idea of the reason why all of these budgets are where they are. And it's not gonna be a scenario where the police budget is 8% over for, you know, crazy reasons that we need to knock it back by 3%, and then, you know, the, the DPW is also up by 9%, and we gotta pare that back. I, I think that hopefully at the beginning of this budget season, we'll already have a pretty good grasp on it. And Jeremy should hopefully be able to explain what, where all these budgets are, how they fit into the, the, the big picture. And I think that ideally, we should be able to vote on these budgets as they come before us, because Jeremy has already placed them within the hole. So that's, that's my current position.
And that's a good point. I will say, like, last year's was, at least in the six, seven years I've been in the board, one of the smoother and kind of more cohesive presentations to us. I will say that, that actually looked like I was actually reviewed holistically, I will say. And I think what you're saying, isn't that inconsistent with Jeff and I are saying? I, I think.
We agree.
Yeah, I, I think we're kind of, as Jeff says, violent agreement, but I, I think we're actually like, you know, all kind of think in the same way. Marion, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I want to ask about the School Committee and Regional Sherburne School Budget Step. I guess the, the timing there is determined by when the School Committee is ready to put their budget forward. But not having been in, in the thick of this, and not having been on Advisory, I'm a little, I'm not as well prepared to make any comments here, but I do recall that in the past, the regional school budget has been a, a more difficult one to track, a more difficult one to anticipate, and I'm wondering if the the first interaction with the School Committee approval of regional school budget, School Committee approval. How, how does the, well, let me just cut to the chase. How does the regional school budget timing fit into this whole thing? And how can we get a better handle on it earlier to get more input to the regional school?
Thanks, Marion. A couple of things to, to add some context. I I have a meeting set up with Beth and Dawn. Uh, I believe it's next week, if not the week after, that I'll. Uh, be able to get some some better dates from them as far as when they propose to present some budgets to their their various committees, the 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 local school committee and the regional school committee. And then I can help, you know, inform the schedule better with those dates. Um, at some point, um, Dan will appoint. An advisory rep, you know, representative to to work with the school committee as well, um, and he can speak to that. Um, so that they'll they'll be involved through through the budget process with the school as well.
Yeah, Dan, let's go ahead.
Thanks, Eric. Um, so just a couple of things to add to what Jeremy said. Uh, one is that we'll have multiple um liaisons to the schools because it's a complicated budget and having multiple sets of eyes on that. Is very helpful. Uh, so we as the advisory liaisons will meet with uh Don Tatore probably in early January, and so that will be kind of our first chance to. Kind of ask questions and raise issues if there are concerns about particular aspects of the budget. We did that last year. And, you know, made some progress, not tremendous progress, but some on uh things that uh. We were concerned about where, you know, they made some adjustments and changes in response to that. I think one challenge with the school budgets, which we saw last year in a very big way. Is that their version one point O budget typically is higher than what they actually think they're going to ask for. And last year, you'll recall that that. On on their version one point O budget suggested not so much excess levy capacity. Um, and then they came out with the subsequent versions and well, gosh, you know, we don't really need that much. So they have a process where. They like to start high and then come down. Uh, I've talked with Dawn about that over the summer and have encouraged her to try to. Have that version one point O, which is what will get into Jeremy's roll up. Uh, be a little closer to what they actually think they're gonna uh land with. Um, I don't know that I made much progress on that, but I think it would be much more helpful for our budget process if they did, so we don't. Have this big number and then we have to try to guess, well, how much are they going to bring that down when they get to a a more serious budget in version two point O? So that has been a challenge, probably will continue to be.
And that's pretty much like. Every department, public or private in the universe does that.
Right, uh, I. I have a little follow on comment that may be a little outside of the schedule, but maybe not. I'm not sure. Um. I've uh, I I had suggested as one of the the general goals, and it may not be a as pressing as I think it is. But um Dover is presumably going through the same thing at around the same time. And I'm wondering if you guys see an opportunity to interact with Dover. Uh, while this is going on, I mean, to speak to the people who are doing your job in Dover. Uh, to have sort of um both towns agree on an approach to the regional school budgets.
Yeah, I I am asked to, I don't know enough about establishing of school budget.
I can comment on that, but Dan Dan might uh be the more appropriate commenter at the moment.
Let me start, others can can. Um, so I advisory uh made considerable efforts. I made considerable efforts over the last six months or so to connect with. Uh, Dover warrant folks and their capital budget committee um that. Came, we did that a year ago at school budget time to kind of exchange views and information. Which made our joint. Uh, Dover Warren Sherburne Advisory Meeting with the School Committees a little bit better. Because after we Sherburne did its kind of discussion and perspective on the budget, the Dover. Warrant Chair said completely agree with what the Chair of Advisory just said, so we had kind of brought them along. Um, you will see, I think, soon, um, you you may recall last spring, there was this uh uh issue about budget process around. The uh cost overruns on the um air handling units on the high school. So we've collaborated with Dover Warrant Capital Budget to jointly uh write a letter to the schools about some ways that we think the budget process. Small ways, but some ways that we think that should change. So we've been working hard to try to connect with the Dover folks and. My expectation is that with that. Ongoing collaboration, we'll be able to do more of that when it comes to school budget in the uh in the season and hopefully, as you suggested, Marion. Uh, kind of come to a common view ahead of time to then present to the school committee.
Thank you. That was great.
Excellent. Um, any other thoughts about this or many more specific questions about the um schedule that Jeremy presented? I just brought this up because it's kind of just something that's flagged us every single year. Yeah, Paul, I say you know to put the button.
Well, I'm the one that's been advocating for two votes. On the budgets that. At the end of the day, we're going to be advocating for a town meeting. The the reason for two votes. The second vote is pretty clear. That's when we. Vote the final approval of a particular budget. But during the process, when we have a meeting with the departments that report to us. I think we ought to take a position if we just have a discussion with five different viewpoints. I mean, somebody comes in and says, I I I want to paint the town red and. And then one select one wants it to be blue, another select one says green, another select one says uh. Brown, and another one says orange. Okay, so then then we call the next budget and we go on to the next budget. If you have a vote. You you you're getting on the same page, a preliminary vote. In which you indicate, we like the budget, we like where you're heading. We like the items that you are giving priority to. That just. Provides better communication. I think. So I've been advocating for several years now that there there be two. At least two votes. The preliminary vote. Preliminary approval. And then the final vote. When we have the overall picture. To see if we need to make some cuts. Generally across the town. To balance the budget.
So that's my. Stephen, what are your? Oh, sorry.
Um, yeah, I mean, ultimately, like I I think that I basically agree with Paul on that. I I I almost. I mean, again, to um reiterate my my earlier comment. I don't even know that we need a final vote, you know, unless something has significantly changed about a budget. Um, you know, because I know that when I was on. Advisory, I remember that there was one year that, uh, you know, Sean. Um, told us that it was very helpful to have the select board, you know, review. Their budgets first before they went to advisory and get the sort of vote of approval or vote of confidence from the select board. Because that made their position a lot easier to defend when they went uh before advisory, you know, especially if. If the budget went up for a particular reason, and it was a reason that for policy reasons, the select board was in support of and, you know, fully aware of the fact that it was causing that department's budget to go up. So that when uh they go in front of advisory and advisory is just looking at the bottom line and saying, no, you got to cut. Fifty grand out of your budget and get low guidance, then, you know, that department head can be like, well. I can't do that unless I cut X, Y, or Z, which is uh something that's the select board feels strongly needs to stay in the budget. Um, so so I do, I agree that it is helpful for the select board to take a position on each individual budget as it comes before um the board. So I I do agree that. A vote at that time is helpful. You know, if we want to do a second final vote, um, we can do that if we want. I would, I would strongly urge that we not. Do that at the public hearing. Um, you know, again, I am sensitive, having run for public meeting meeting of public hearings that. Anything that potentially delays that public hearing is, uh, I mean, it's um, it's a thorn in the side of the advisory chair. And if the select board can get all of our ducks in a row before the public hearing, I think that makes that whole day go a lot smoother and more efficiently. Um, you know, if we really want to have one or two meetings prior to the hearing where, because we obviously have to vote on every single warrant article, if we want to also vote on every individual budget. Um, around that same time, you know, it's it's going to be a meeting, a a long meeting for us, but 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 if that's what we want to do to ourselves, we can.
No, and I recognize people, the only counterpoint I have is to some degree. At least as far as the departments know, they get it with our conversation, like we can, we give consensus, like they know if we like it or not. I don't think it's as important as Paul indicates it like, oh, you know, we support usually here's the vote or whatever, and sometimes the vote feels a little ceremonial. I do appreciate what you say, if simply do it with advisory, and that was done, I don't know, one or two years, wasn't done when I first on here. I thought, I think, well, I thought there was a point when, early when I was on here, when Jana was here, we actually listened to everyone. And then we voted before the advisory's meeting. We had a tally of the votes before then. That's kind of what I was more targeting. I guess you're right. I don't, I'm not a big fan of voting with advisory after hearing. I'd rather vote before that. Um, I still kind of, I don't, I don't feel strongly, but my preference is. To hear, hear the presentations for on the select board, just talking select board stuff, hear the presentations and then um. Give our feedback, they all understand consensus and still vote at the end, just because things might shift, but. If this board feels differently, I'll go either way, to be honest. Uh, Sean, what are your thoughts?
Hey, thanks. I'll I'll try to keep it brief. I. I love Stephen's comments because we, you know, we went through this when he when he was the chair. And um, you know, it's it's really difficult because some of, there's times where um. The budget makers are kind of in a vacuum. Um, because there's there's multiple meetings that go on with advisory. That that the select board's not aware of, or or they're not, they're certainly not in. And, you know, there's pushback, and it it may be pushback that's derived by the model that. Frankly, e- e- everyone's aware that the school is at least two orders of magnitude higher than any of the select board budgets. In fact, I think it's two orders of magnitude higher than all of the select board budgets. So, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do, but. Getting the directive from a committee that's staring at the at the school budget that might be at one point O and and. You know, giving up what we would, may or may not have been a director from the select board to the DPW director or the or the, you know, the fire or the police chief. Um, you know, we we don't have that representation, so it's super helpful. I mean, obviously, we have Jeremy. As a liaison, but it's helpful to have the backing of the board, you know, if there's a director from the board, listen, we want you working on. X, Y, Z. And it's going to affect your budget. And I, you know, Stephen and I have a distinct memory of this with facilities. That was the biggest thing. In in recent past, and it was, it was disappointing that we didn't probably pull off what we should have pulled off probably his last year of. Of uh. Being the chair because, you know, there was a lot of budget pressures from elsewhere. They weren't necessarily from from the facilities, but we didn't make the increase when we probably should have. And and it helps to have the backing of the board that we that we work for. To counter the other boards that are staring at the budget model. So I I urge you to hear us early and often.
And just and you prefer us to actually vote. Not just hear you, but rather than give consensus to actually make a strong vote um as you early on, essentially.
Well, uh, either a vote or at least, you know, an affirmative. Nod, um, so that, you know, myself or the, you know, especially the two, myself and the two chiefs. We have Jeremy to say, yes, th- this is the directive we got. From the board. So that when we're sitting in front of Dan or capital budget or the other committees. You know, there there's some backing. Because of, you know, if advisory asks me to knock. A couple of items down and and pull five percent on it by budget, I can. I always can. But you you have to ask where the, you know, what's the level of service disruption? There's going to be a disruption in level of service. And, you know, that's. That's that's a given, and if I if I'm not given a directive by the. By the board and by Jeremy to level to to lower the service, then I'm frankly not going to do it. Despite what advisory asked for.
I'm coming with an idea, but let me um, let me hear Jeremy and then Paul. I'm coming up with an idea.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. So I I guess to help with this a little bit, I mean, I'm hoping that um, you know, kind of this discussion and the discussion that. Is scheduled for your your November seventh meeting is to to continue this conversation and also. Uh, a little later tonight, actually, right after we talk about the schedule, I want to talk about some some observations about the budget uh that um. That, you know, from conversation with department heads and and so forth. But I'm hoping that helps inform what ends up being, you know, the quote consolidated budget submitted to both the select board and advisory on uh December thirty first. And then there's the full months of January and February. That you will have all of, you know, all of your regular meetings will be able to to bring forward. Uh, at that point, we'll know what budgets might have some bigger stressor than others. And they need your support or your input. And so for the months of January and February, we we have, you know, all of the meetings that you have scheduled uh to do that. We can bring another. Department head for you, um, if we need your help to advocate or. Or get a a viewpoint on on an issue. Uh, we've got those two months. Before uh March sixth, which is a regular scheduled meeting of yours. Where you did on March sixth, by then you may have had some preliminary. Votes to support or input you given. Um, but on March sixth, then you you wouldn't approve all of, vote on all of your select board budgets. In advance of the advisory public hearing that that following week.
I do like that. I'll recognize Paul in a second. I'm still biased in that. I I'm still, especially now that you highlight this and literally highlighted, by the way, that the March sixth. I kind of like that hearing them and giving the feedback. Don't get me wrong, I completely appreciate what Sean's saying. He wants to know, we don't just sit there and nod. We say, well. You know, and I fully agree with them that, you know, you cut something, of course, you have a law, you lose service. There's no question about that. Um. But we give that feedback as the meetings go on. And on March sixth, then we have kind of a comprehensive, maybe even standalone, try to minimize any other business with it. Um, meeting about uh just about the select board budgets as it's all pulled together and vote on it. Uh, Paul, go ahead.
Well, two things. Over the years, I've had feedback from various. Department heads. In which they've said it's very helpful to them. For a variety of reasons to to know what the board's position is, and that the only way you can. The board to take a position is really to have a vote. And many times. I've sat through meetings, budgetary meetings where different people say different things. And if you don't have a vote. You're you're leaving some confusion out there. So I wanted to report the feedback over the years has been asking for. That vote. And the the other part of this is that I feel personally that once I vote in favor of a budget. I'm committed to advocate for that budget and to fight for it. I think. The. Department heads, the employees and so on, need to know that we will fight for them and and. Support their their programs and their ideas and so on. It's not just, you know, passively sitting back, listening to what they have to say, nodding. And then when we see all the budgets, well, we got to cut, you know, twenty percent out of everybody's budget. Yes, just not at that. I I want to fight for those budgets, and I want to fight for a level of service. I want to advocate and want us. Be a little more active and less passive, so I. I continue to advocate for what what Steve said about. Having that or or an earlier vote.
All right, I mean. And maybe you got that feedback a while ago. Oh, we just got some feedback now. I'm not sure. That's always the case. Well, as I've been on it, I think it's been pretty definitive as the board's direction here and um through, especially. You know, with the with a stronger town administrator such as we have now. And maybe we don't. You want to advocate for, you know, services and more departments. Some people may want to advocate to lower taxes and lower expenses. And even sacrifice services. That's might not be everyone's goal is to just, you know, do more, spend more. And um. And for those uh spenders, I get it, and I get a department, you know, a good, a good leader will fight for that, but there come times a realistic sense where we still have the fifth highest average taxes in the state of Massachusetts, and maybe not everyone. Is going to fight to spend money. And I saw, I'm not sure that's. That's completely the case. And sometimes we hear something, yeah, that sounds good. You vote on it, then you see things too later, you know, two presentations later. And you think, well, that's a little bit more important. So I mean, I'm, I don't think I'm on that page. Uh, yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I would sort of supplement what you just said, which is that we don't know what we can afford, Paul. Yeah, I would sort of supplement what you just said, which is that we don't know what we can afford, Paul. You can't vote on something if you don't know what the aggregate numbers are. So. We may have certain budgets where we would like to offer them a little bit more funding, but we have to see. What that does to the overall. Budget before the uh, advisory hearing. So we, you know, if some thing makes sense to us collectively. To increase funding in some department, we have to always compare that to see if some other department. You know, it comes in lower or if we want to agree to spend more and find sources of the revenue. To do it. So we can't vote. I don't, I feel that we can't vote on any of this apartment in isolation. Without knowing the collective significance.
Okay, um, in attempt to wrap this up, I'm not gonna collect the vote, I'm just gonna unofficial collect the vote. I, I say vote at the end, Jeff says vote at the end, Paul says vote intermittently. Uh, Stephen, uh, uh, clarify yours. I, I was kind of getting a little both vibes there a little bit.
Uh, yeah, I mean. It, it is my preference to vote as they come before us, but ultimately, uh, I'm not gonna like. Not gonna fight for it, you know? Like, if you as the chair decide that you want to wait till the end and vote, I'm, I'm, I'm happy. I, I think. To me, actually, the more important thing is not to wait until the advisory public hearing and then vote. Um, at the hearing, it, 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 uh, I don't know. It, it bugs me every time. We decide to vote on something just before advisory, after all the discussion. I'm like, no, this is advisory's hearing. It's not our hearing. We shouldn't be doing this.
I agree. And I do want to qualify mine saying, I think we should give solid feedback. We shouldn't sit there, hear a presentation and be silent. You know, I mean, I encourage people and I don't think, I don't, I don't think this group is ever accused of that, to be honest. Marion, both, whatever you have your hand raised for, and I'd like to know your thoughts on vote as you go or vote at the end.
Right, that's what I'm going to talk about. I just wanted to make sure you didn't pass over me.
Oh, no, I couldn't ever do that.
We would never, Marion, never.
I wouldn't let you anyway. Um, yeah, I, I think, you know, we're talking about voter, no vote, but. A preliminary vote is basically a more consolidated version of, do we like this? Uh, you know, is this a high enough priority? Do we really like it? So I think a vote is a good thing. It just, uh, when we are asked to take a vote. It forces us to summarize, you know, what we like about it, what maybe we don't and. Give a consolidated view. And I think that's useful before the joint meeting with advisory. As we review the budgets individually, understanding that it's preliminary. And when we see the whole thing, we may have to. Uh, change our tune, but that's my view.
My thing is, again, I don't know, I, I think that's three to two. I can't decide Stephen's vote.
Well, let's take a vote.
I might still reserve it as we go. Cause my only thing is, is often pressure, or like, I think a lot of people don't want to be the nay vote on something. Do I mean, we vote, I think it's often pressure or like, oh yeah, I like the police department. Now, of course, who doesn't, right? But someone doesn't like something in there. I don't think maybe that they want to be the one to make that nay vote. I think it's a little pressure. And that's a, that's one of my thoughts.
Definitely need to vote tonight. I mean, it, it as, as this schedule and that the timeframe goes forward. The reality is you're going to see a consolidated budget at the end of December. Uh, and that's going to be just after the department heads and the budget makers have put things together. That's going to, you know, include some input. And review by the town administrator and finance director, but we don't have a whole lot of, of authority. In that matter, uh, according to the town's bylaws. So the consolidated budget you see on the thirty first is. May be unbalanced. And then you'll have the month of January and February. To help, you know, us all bring it within balance. And, and through tho- those two months, you, you will. It will know what, what the, the pressure points are at that point and what. Uh, we'll want to have more discussions about and, 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 and that you'll want to have more discussions about. So I, I, I think you're, you're pretty much. All kind of in, in consensus in, in a way.
One more thing I'll bring up just that thought about it a while ago. I don't really know if I'm in favor of, I'm just going to bring up for discussion purposes. I don't want you up too much time with it. Um, is there any desire for the select board budgets? To do what advisory does and have a select board person assigned to a various like department or budget or something like that, just to kind of put more detail into it. To kind of do that dive into things and, and so on like that. If, if you don't think that's, that's the case, I'm, I'm going to look to the people from, the two people from advisory kind of. On their thoughts on that. Something I just thought.
I think, I think Jeremy's our man. Jeremy's our man in the field.
The difference between you and advisory, you have, you, you hire a town administrator and you pay, you pay me to, to do that sort of thing for you. Um, you feel free to, to talk to them. At will, but, but um, advisory doesn't have that, that sort of staffing. But they, they approach things differently.
Yeah, and I think also, it's like part of the advantage of Jeremy's as well. I mean, with advisory, it's like. You know, you have to call a public meeting every single time you want to talk to a department essentially, whereas with Jeremy. Uh, he can have one-on-one meetings with the department heads any day of the week, you know, and. If, if he gets together with somebody on a Tuesday and they're like, all right, now we got to work on this. They can come back together again on Thursday, you know, or the following. Monday, you know, it's, there's no, there's no like, oh, well, let's wait till the next meeting, which is going to be two weeks from now. So, um, so. Uh, to me, re- really, it's like my vision is for Jeremy to be really in control of the select board's budgets, you know? I mean, I, I feel like. At, at some point, Jeremy, like you had kind of presented to me kind of like this vision of, you know, how things work in some other towns where it's kind of like. It's the town administrator's budget that is being presented to. The select board and being presented to the advisory committee because the town administrator has been doing the heavy lifting and the legwork for the past. You know, two months to get it all together. Um, so. Uh, to me, that's why I'm a little bit like, okay, I, I think I understand that, uh, you know, come. Uh, you know, January first, January second. Uh, we might have a better idea of just how, how out of whack are all of these budgets, right? And then Jeremy might be able to say like, okay, collectively, the town's budget is up twelve percent and like, something's got to give and. I agree that we're not going to be able to approve each department's budget as we see them if the collective budget is twelve percent over, right? Whereas if by January first, Jeremy's already gotten it to a point where, let's say guidance is, you know, whatever, two, two percent. And if the collective budget is at three and a half percent, it's like, well, there's not a whole lot, there's not, not, not a whole lot to give there, right? And so it's just kind of like, uh, everything's probably pretty close to where it needs to be. So we, we might be, be able to make that decision. In early January, once we've got all of the initial budgets submitted, you know?
That's a very good point. All right, I was throwing it out there.
Four meetings in January and February to, to have some discussion as we go.
All right. All right, I'm going to wrap up that. Unwrap up that. We, we had a couple of other items there from the, the consideration of the budget as well as the select board goals. Um, does anyone want to, um, at least discuss some of that? Oh, there's good, Jeremy has a presentation.
Yeah, what I wanted to try to help you folks with, um, you know, thank you for, um, folks that have informed some of the goals. Um, want to touch on that in a second, but what I, we're trying to try to do is kind of bring these, some of those goals forward. Uh, and also combine things with some of the observations, uh, and, and discussions with department heads. Um, uh, and, and sort of just highlight some of the, the, the things that may be considered. Uh, in the FY twenty six budget. Um, of where we sit now, so. On the, you know, your budget has two sides. It has an expense side and a revenue side. I, I think you should, should take a point to, to focus on both. It's not all expenses. These also the revenue side, uh, and you know, through this fall, uh, you may want to, 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 to highlight some of that revenue side and, and take a look at that. Uh, on the expense side, one of the bigger expenses that, that the town has is the, the health insurance it provides to the town employees. Not only in, in town hall and the police and fire, public works, but also to the Pine Hill School employees. Uh, that represents about five percent of the total town budget to one point eight million dollar expense. We've been fortunate over the last couple of years that the increase has been in the three percent range. Uh, however, when we initially talked to, uh, our providers, they've said, said to estimate in budget for an eight percent increase. So. Uh, just highlighting that, uh, that. We have a budget, um, a preliminary meeting with, with Maya on the insurance on October twenty second. So we'll have some better indications there when, uh, as far as what we should be starting to budget for. And then, you know, as we go through the budget process, that gets more refined, but that can be a big budget driver, uh, uh, any, any sort of increase in such a large part of your budget. Um, on the personnel side. You know, we still struggle to fill the conservation agent position. Uh, we have. Uh, been working with the town of Millis to look at a shared arrangement, uh, and just, just being creative with how we recruit for the position. Um, so I just kind of flagged that as, as something that we may need to consider, uh, to, to make sure we fill that, that, that need. Uh, the sustainability coordinator, certainly we, we are very close with the town of Paulistin to have a shared sustainability coordinator. Uh, their, their select board is, is, is very close to approval. Uh, however, they now, they're a little tied up in their town meeting process, getting through their MBTA zoning. They have a fall town meeting, so that, that's where we're delayed right there, but I just highlight that because we haven't filled it yet. One of the things that Marion has brought up recently is to, to look at the town planners, uh, the resources and the time. Uh, available, uh, and, and to consider that position and, and, and the time allotted. Other personnel, veteran service officer, so. We've been notified that our veteran service offer, operate, uh, uh, officer Diana is not eligible. Um, to become accredited with the Veterans Administration. So she's not able to receive the training she needs to give guidance to, to veterans. So we've been looking to enter into an agreement, uh, do something similar to the way the town of Dover has. The, the VSO from Natick assisting them. Uh, so we're, we're looking into that, but this could be a budget difference. Um, right now, we. We pay, uh, Diana fifty, uh, five hundred dollars per year as a stipend. Uh, currently Dover pays a thousand dollars to the, the town of Natick's, uh, Veterans Officer for that sort of service. Uh, but, uh, if we had to go another route, um, that could be a much bigger expense. I think there's still opportunities for some shared arrangements and staffing amongst the finance departments. Uh, assessing treasure collector and accounting. They all have administrative assistants or, or, or the like that. We, we need to, to cross train and, and see if there's any synergies there. Public Works staff, oh, sorry, I see Paul, you have a question?
Well, yeah, you're going through all these items and I don't want to interrupt that, but, um. I was wondering, rather than going through all these items, are there some, some big items out there? That are looming? Like. You know, building a new school or building, you know, a new building or something. Is, is there any big ticket item in here?
Uh, I would like to say though, I would like. Unless the board disagrees, Jeremy, to go through these, because I know about a lot of these and other people might not, and I think it's one of those things where some things are. I think some things are coming up. I think it's worth at least hearing. We can highlight the large one. I don't want to skip anything. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, on the personnel side, we have talked about providing more support to the Pine Hill Cemetery, uh, Committee. Um, and I've heard from folks of, about desire to, to increase some of our, um, upkeep of the village center and care. So I just want to relay that. I've heard that from some, some residents of town to, to, to. Really look at the town's aesthetics and provide a little bit more support to that in a village area. Uh, so I just wanted to bring that forward, raise that up. Chief Ward has mentioned that, um, you know, they're going through a strategic plan process. Uh, which we, we will, you know, bring to you, uh, when ready. But he has indicated that, you know, they, they are, and he's not sure what, what staffing that may entail, but. Um, there is some concern on, on the fire response side, um, in, in. In, in his response, so he, he might, um, be considering some staffing, uh, increases there for, for response. And of course, there's the COLA for, for town, uh, townwide personnel outside of the CBA agreements. There's a process towards, towards that. The Personnel Board, um, needs to give a recommendation by November to the advisory to inform that. You know, a, a one percent COLA amounts to about thirty thousand dollars in your budget, just for perspective. So it's really not a, a huge budget item compared to some others. Uh, you do have. Two collective bargaining agreements, um, well, one you, you've been discussing, that's Public Works Department. The Police Department, uh, officers also, um, comes due and, and at the end of June of twenty twenty five. So you, you'll be likely be hearing, um, them reaching out shortly to negotiate their contract. Uh, there's a couple of other smaller contracts, uh, your Public Works Director and your Town Administrator. Uh, both would have contracts, um, to, to consider during the FY twenty six budget. One of the, the bigger items that, that folks have raised up to, to consider. Is how the town, um, proceed with debt service. Uh, currently, debt service is about five percent of the town's revenue. Uh, there's about fifteen million dollars in outstanding debt. Uh, essentially all of that is exempt debt, so none of that is within your tax levy. That's all, um, exempt. From, from the tax levy. There has been some questions about whether there should be some, um, level of debt within your levy. Or should you stay at the same, the same, same practice? So I'm. If you desire, I'm, I certainly can look into some options there and, and give you some ideas of what that might look like. Um, you know, working with the Capital Budget Committee and Advisory.
I think that would be a good idea, actually, just that. Just want to insert that while we're on the debt service, um. Line, I mean, essentially in support of what Eric was saying at the end of last fiscal year, trying to get more of that, um. Into the levy. I think a lot of it will depend on, um, Dan's kind of projections on how we're looking in terms of hitting the levy limit in the coming years, um. So, um, so I think if you can work with, uh, with advisory and capital budget on that, that would be excellent.
I agree with Stephen.
Obviously, I agree.
So we'll, yeah, so more to come on that, you know, we'll, we'll have, uh, as the capital budgets come in, um, and we, we can put in some, some ideas. Um, together and, and discuss more about that. Uh, water treatment operating costs, obviously the PFAS treatment, uh, that will be added to the, the town building shortly. I have an update later. Uh, on the status of that project, but the operating expenses to operate those will, will necessarily increase. Uh, the library, uh, energy use is trending higher. Uh, we do have. Energy contracts for natural gas, natural gas and electricity that are coming due shortly. I've been monitoring that the markets to see when it was, when it's. Appropriate to jump in, obviously, that the re- the recent events of the past week has thrown a curve ball. Um, however, um, you know, those things are a big part of your budget. IT, uh, expense consolidation could furthering, uh, continuing to do that. Uh, in particular, mobile phones have come up that's scattered through our budgets. There might be a more consolidated way to do. Consolidated way to do that and maybe some, uh, expense savings. We've been talking a lot about the building permit process and, and system and the tools that are used by the land development folks. Uh, that may be an impact to the budget should some, some improvements come, uh, to fruition there. One of the gaps as well in information technology is, is the lack of a GIS system or geographic information system. Is the town has a ton of data, uh, that is not, not managed centrally and it's, it's really all over. Uh, and unfortunately not up to date in some cases, uh, which has been a challenge. So, uh, we have a working group trying to, to figure out a solution to that. There, there may be some budget implications as a result of that. Your stabilization funds. You know, in generally you'll. You have your financial management policies. You, you contribute about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, annually to general stabilization and two hundred thousand dollars to OPEB stabilization with the new valuation that's come in for OPEB. Um, that OPEB liability has been reduced by thirty percent, a big reduction of three and a half million. So it now stands at eight point seven million. Uh, that was a result of good, great plan experience and changes in the actuarial assumptions. That might make you think differently as far as how much you contribute annually to the OPEB. Um, stabilization fund. Um, given that valuation, you know, the Tri-County Regional Vocational, um, School has their, their building project. Uh, the assessment from last fiscal year to this current fiscal year increased. Up to seventy seven thousand from twenty thousand, that was a result of increased enrollment, it's about eighteen thousand dollars per year per student. Uh, that will, will continue into FY twenty six. But additionally, we may be seeing some of the, the start of the debt service for the, um, reconstruction of that vocational school. Estimates are that's about sixty thousand dollars per year in a, in debt service that'll be assessed to Sherburne. But that's certainly something that we will need to consider. And then, as I mentioned, on the revenue side. That is something for you to continue discussions on, um, in that. As you know. The, the vast majority of the revenue that, that Sherburne sees is from, uh, property taxes and in particular. Uh, residential property taxes. And that's limited by Prop two and a half, so, you know. Two and a, Prop two and a half says that you can increase your levy limit. Two and a half percent plus new growth from year to year. Um, and that new growth is, is that variable, so two and a half percent is a, is a set percent. That new growth is a variable that's adding. The new growth is, is new construction, it's building additions, it's a new, new house, a new building, it's added value. Um, that does not impact your, your tax rate, it's, it's added income. That you would see since. Um, that new growth in, in many communities is very important for them to balance their budget.
So can I? Make a comment here? One of the things we ought to consider in terms of, um. Budgets is the passage of the Community Preservation Act. If that passes. I think one of the commitments we made was that. The revenue stream. Would be used to pay for projects that we would otherwise see. In our expenses. So that would provide. New revenue. A new revenue stream. And correspondingly. That new revenue stream. Should be used to offset some of the expenses on the. On the other side. Of the ledger. Just wanted to make a note here, cause we'll know the answer to that in, uh. In a month, month, uh. Roughly a month from now. And that, that might change. The, the equations.
Yep, that'll certainly be a consideration in how you, you. In your debt, the debt question as far as exempt, non-exempt, it's another source of funding for capital. Uh, and among other things, so. Um, yeah, certainly, and, and a, in a month after the, the ballot vote. Uh, you'll know, um, whether that's at play or not. It, it so happens that, you know, I've been asked to, to take a look at some of, um, you know. Our Sherburne's history compared to some of your peers such as Dover, Carlisle. Uh, gathered some information on that historically. Uh, it just so happens that Dan, Dan Sickle, you're the Chair of your Advisory, he's also done the same. Um, uh. Think you may be interested in seeing some of that information presented to you. Um, over the past twenty years, uh, Sherburne's new growth has averaged about one percent per year. Uh, compared to Dover and Carlisle, which is averaged around a little, a little less than two percent per year, and. Of course, over the twenty years, you can see there's, there's a difference in. Um, the, the revenues that they have seen from new growth and those two, those two communities that we consider peers, but. Um, I think you, you may be, may be interested to see some of that information that, that Dan and I have put together. So, some more to come on that, maybe later this fall. Wanted to touch on one, uh, revenue decrease that we know of right now. And that's some, uh, property valuation changes. So there's. A, a handful of properties, valuations have, have declined or, or changed as a result of changes in their category of use. They may have been purchased by a land trust or put into conservation restriction. Um, that, that does happen, you know, annually, but it, it's happened in a, in a large, to a larger extent this past year. Uh, than, than is the norm. There's a, uh, an eleven million dollar. Reduction in the town's overall assessed value as a result of this, so that's. That eleven million dollars of valuation would have generated an annual revenue of about a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars. So that's right off the bat, we're sort of starting a hundred and eighty two dollars behind. Um, that amounts to about ten percent. About ten cents per thousand on your tax rate. Um, so just. By way of some of the, the bigger. It's not, they don't only come on the expense side, they come on the revenue side as well. Um, where we're, we're kind of starting from behind a little bit going into the budget season with, with that, those valuation changes. I'd always suggest that the local revenue account, accounts for about five percent of your rev, revenue, it's not a big portion, but it is something. It's about one point eight million. You know, that's made up of, of these collected locally. Whether there be fees for service like building permits, which you see a revenue of about two hundred thirty thousand dollars per year in building permits. Border health permits, fifty five thousand dollars per year. Fire permits, eighteen thousand dollars per year. Transfer station fees, twenty five thousand dollars per year, dog licenses, eighteen thousand dollars per year. They, they do add up and those fees are kind of fees for service. So they, they should be reviewed, uh, regularly to make sure that that fee for service is appropriate. And balanced by the actual costs of providing that service. Um, back again to, uh, capital. There are tools available to the town to, to fund capital such as special purpose stabilization funds for capital. Um, those are ways to generate funds, um, through the tax levy, uh, that, um. So you wouldn't need to borrow money for, um, for capital projects. Those are, those could be part of your conversation as far as how to fund capital.
Oh, I was just wanted to ask, uh, I noticed that the regional school, Dover Sherburne Regional School. Is not on the expense side, is there a reason for that?
Because I'm not aware of any, any issues at this point in that. Um. None, none have been brought forward, so. Uh, as mentioned earlier, the, that, that is a. The biggest portion of the town's expenses. Um. We will, we will see shortly, um, in the coming months. What they'll be requesting. Uh, meeting with Beth. And Dawn next week, they may give some indication to me, uh, of what they're thinking and putting together for the school committees, or they may not, um. But I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Oh, yeah, that, I'm sure you will, I was just wondering why it's not on your list there.
It's a, it's a big consideration, but it's outside of my control.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think what. In the left column, Jeremy is sort of. Put in things that he knows are going to be upward pressure on expenses compared to last year's budget. But, the regional schools unknown right now, so.
Right, yeah.
It's been local schools for that matter.
Yeah.
Right.
Um. And then just two, two quick things before I wanted to sort of show what some of the things that may be coming up for you to consider at the town meeting next year. Um. Couple, we talked about the budget calendar. Wanted to touch on overlay. The overlay is not a budgeted item, it's actually, it's, but it is something in the town that affects your tax rate, it's. Set by the Board of Assessors when they need to increase the amount in overlay. The overlay is available for tax abatements, it's, it's a, a pot of money that they need to have available. If somebody file, comes in to file for, for an abatement of their taxes. Um, we haven't contributed to that, it hasn't been. Uh, a, a funded line item since FY twenty three, so for the last two fiscal years, it's not been. Uh, something that has affected your tax rate. Um, and in fact, we had built, we have built up a fair reserve in overlay. Uh, and we're, we're. Potentially going to recommend some release. However, the, the changes in the valuation that I mentioned earlier. Also are affecting some of, some larger, um. Uh. Refunds that will be issued so that the balance in the overlay is, is not as healthy as we. Thought it might be last year to release on this year. Um, but we'll know, you know, over the course of the next couple of months, whether. Uh, the Board of Assessors believes they need to fund anymore or not fund anymore, or if there's any to be released, it's. If it's released, it's essentially a one-time. Uh, revenue, um, that. You might want to put forward towards capital funding. Um, but I just raised that as, it's, it's not, it may not be as, as big as we. Uh, may have thought it might be because of the, the property. Uh, category changes and evaluations. Earlier discussed. Um. And then outside of the town. Town budget. I wanted to.
Uh, before you move to another page, can I ask two, two quick questions? One on OPEB. I know in the past that the, um, sort of, uh, consultant slash analyst, um, that presents to us about, um, our OPEB liability. Like near the end of the report would. Makes recommendations as to what, what we should do, which usually is, yeah, just continue doing what you're doing, which is, you know, putting. Hundred thousand in from free cash and another hundred thousand from. The tax levy, so given the thirty percent reduction in our liability, do we know what, was there a recommendation to reduce our? Um, contribution to the OPEB trust fund?
No, there was, there was no recommendation, increase, decrease, or otherwise, um, not, not in the valuation. But, we, we can inquire, um, to them.
Yeah, I, I would, cause I think there was usually, it's like, they would set like, okay, on your current trajectory, you will have. Um, covered your liability at X year, you know, whatever it was, twenty forty or something like that. So if the goal was to just maintain that same trajectory, I would assume that with a decrease in the liability, we could reach it by. You know, and, and still reduce the, the contribution, so I mean. It might not be huge, that may, might be thirty thousand dollars, right, forty, sixty thousand dollars, but. Uh, you know, that might help to offset the hundred and eighty two thousand dollars that we're losing in, in, in revenue. Um, and then the other thing would be, and I guess that's all Advisory's decision anyways. Um, with the Tri-County, you said that, um, our assessment has gone up because of enrollment, so do you, do you happen to know? Are we now, there was like a minimum enrollment that we were paying for anyways, and we didn't have enough students to even hit that minimum, are we over that minimum now? In terms of the enrollment?
Well, I'm not sure what, what the, the budgeted or what the anticipated, um. It's gonna, it could vary, we don't know what the enrollment's gonna be for, for next year.
Hmm.
Um, but we are currently at. I'm gonna note here.
I want to say it was five students was like the.
Five, it's exactly five students, and I believe we have two or three right now.
It's enrollment and the new construction of the building, I think that was the heavy effect, wasn't it?
Yes.
But I, I had heard that the enrollment had gone up, though.
There's five quid, students currently.
There's five currently, okay. Yeah, I mean.
Couldn't change our expense.
If, if additional students enroll, then that tuition component goes up eighteen thousand dollars per student.
Yeah.
And it may change the calculation, the, the debt assessment calculations, or what Jeff was mentioning, it was. There's like a, a minimum floor to it and then, um.
Yeah.
Then, then it's based on student enrollment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We pay per student with a minimum, we have to pay at least for five students. Regardless, we had years and years where we had zero students and we.
Yeah, and, and that's outside of the tuition, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean. Uh, you know, theoretically, one of the side effects would be that. Every, every student that is going to Tri-County rather than the region. Um, slightly reduces our assessment from the region because that's. Purely based on enrollment, uh, percentage between Dover and Sherburne, so. Um. Yeah. It's kind of depends on what Dover is doing, but. Each, each time we have a student that, uh, chooses to go somewhere other than the region, our, our assessment, uh. Position is slightly improved or reduced at least.
They don't go to the same, I think they go to a different vocational school too, don't they?
Yeah, they go to a different vocational school, I don't, I don't remember which one it is, but.
Minuteman, I think.
Could be Minuteman.
At least it was forty years ago.
Well, that's when the school that they're currently in was built also. Eighteen sixty seven or something like.
Maybe, maybe when they build the new, um, school, more Sherburne, um, kids will, will be enticed to go.
I'll tell you something funny about that, because of the structure of the school, it's easier to get into AP level courses there, so there are a number of schools now that are. Having students try to go there to get into AP level. Particularly science courses.
Well, so real quick, Jer, I mean, it felt like you were wrapping up because you were hitting on the overlay in the, in the budget calendar we spoke about. Um, do you have anything more to add before we continue our dialogue here?
No, not on the budget.
Okay. Okay, um, is there any questions or comments and, well, maybe to Paul's point. Pick the biggest three things. That you think might be, um, you know, in expense or revenue, but let's talk about expense, I think I know two of them that you're gonna say, but. What do you think are some of the bigger things that are gonna highlight and actually impact our budget? Both either on either expense or revenue. I'll start you out, I think the loss of revenue of certain, uh, valuation of certain properties, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is gonna be a big deal.
Well, what it does, that has a direct impact on your tax rate, so that doesn't change your tax levy, it's a Prop two and a half levy. That's still gonna be the same from last year to this year, so you get two and a half plus new growth, is still the same. What it does is it reduces the amount of property value that you can spread that out over. So right off the bat, your tax rate is gonna be a dime per thousand impacted. So it's not necessarily a budget thing, Eric, it's a tax rate thing.
Yeah. It's. I consider it both, but I know what you're saying, I know what you're saying, the levy is basically your fundamental, the money you have to work with, but. I still view it by the average taxes paid per person.
Yeah.
Uh, what else do you think would be, um, is gonna be something that we're gonna care about, that's gonna be, uh, a big deal, the healthcare?
It could, I mean, I think the town has been fortunate the last couple of years in that three percent range. If it is at eight percent, that, that's gonna be a, a. Something that'd be. Considered. And, you know, and it's, it's not on this list, but, you know, the, the school request is always. Um, something to accommodate.
Yeah, kind of, it's over.
I think the cemetery. You know, is something that's a, a step function change too, we basically have had Suzie Tyler running the cemetery and Chucky. Um, you know, it's, it's in desperate need of more professional service, so we're actually somewhat creating a new budget.
Yeah.
To that budget as well, and that the cemetery does collect fees that they end up paying. Uh, contractors, so instead of having those fees go out to contractors, they could go. To fund, um, you know, town resources, so. There, there's actually an offsetting revenue to, to that, um. Providing that support to the cemeteries.
And that would be, especially if, if it makes a kind of revolving fund, rent a price fund or whatever, and you could actually self-fund someone, I see that. I'm, I, I instinctively push back on new staff, you know, if you can actually reorient the staff, repurpose an existing staff somewhere, that's wonderful. But I, my, my gut response about looking at any of that is to resist, like a new staff person just to take care of cemeteries, I'd almost rather either subcontract or.
They're looking at a contractor, they're looking at outsourcing, aren't you, I think?
Yeah, I mean, what, you know, utilizing the same contractors that Public Works utilizes, um, but managed by Public Works, not necessarily. Increasing staffing at Public Works, but. Um, you know, incorporating some support within the resource that Public Works has. Um, to support the cemetery.
How big are the water treatment operating costs?
That's yet to be seen, um, I have, have, have update later in the Town Administrator Report, uh, on PFAS, that, that might be helpful, but. The operating cost yet to be seen. Um, I think in, in the grand scheme of things, not. Too significant.
Okay.
I feel like Police CBA has the potential to be a significant number as well, not, not because of anything specific that's happening, just that. The Police Department, I believe, is the largest budget after the schools and the majority of that budget is salary, so. Even a small percentage change in the CBA. May, may end up being a, a, a large number on the bottom line.
Well, and the grant we have is being tapered away, it might be zero now for the, um, consolidated number one.
I will say that. I'm, I'm not saying that I'm not in support of that whole thing, but when, when I was on Advisory and that whole thing was pitched and everybody's talking about what a great. Budget saver it was, I'm like, it's a great budget saver now while it's being grant funded, but five years from now, when we're paying for it out of pocket, it's. Gonna be a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
And I, I said the same thing on the Select Board, I really did, but the one thing I can think of is that, um. More and more communities like Framing Harding one now, and some point that will become, may, may it gets more competitive. I think they had a little bit of monopoly on it and maybe they start, um. Different centers start being more competitive to actually get towns and communities to come over to them. Hmm, all right, um, if there's no more on this here. Um, I'm going to ask, I know Jeremy, I've met a couple times since we last talked about this, but we really did not talk about the goals we're supposed to talk about, does anyone want to talk about the goals now? Um, I'm going to ask, I know Jeremy, I've met a couple of times since we last talked about this, but we really did not talk about the goals we're supposed to talk about. Does anyone wanna talk about the goals now or? Do you wanna kick that can a little bit? Or is there any urgent? Reason to talk about this? Just, I'm thinking about the time and I really want to talk about the budget quite a bit.
I would prefer to, to defer it, I think, but.
Yeah, I've sent in some comments on the goals and if others send in comments as well, we could consolidate that in the discussion. Uh, in, in a coming meeting.
I like that, I do, I do. I just, um. It's a lot to talk about and I don't wanna marginalize it and just kind of like, you know, stick it in somewhere. I would like to actually. Spend some time, it is getting late and I did wanna spend the time on the budget, cause I just think that's important. It's okay, well, and I like to move past that. Jeremy, do you have any thoughts before?
No, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, what you've got in your packet incorporates um some recent uh additions from Marion. Uh, tried to highlight those in a different color. But, yeah, I. If, if there's any other feedback that I can incorporate for your discussion, just let me know.
Okay, yeah, keep it on, keep it on an agenda. I definitely don't want to, um. I don't want this to go away. I definitely want to, to spend time on it thoughtfully. Okay, if no more further ado then, that sounds like we're at least done with agenda item number five. And thank you very much, Jeremy. That was a good presentation. It gave a lot of food for thought. We had some great dialogue about it as well. I look, I'd say I look forward to the budget discussions. I never really do, but I, I kinda do.
All that being said. Maybe you should go to advisory after your uh, your stint on select board is done.
Yeah, there you go. Thirty years now.
You'll do nothing but talk about budgets all day long.
Um, okay, I, number six, consideration of appointments. Is this you, Jeremy? I think we have right here.
Yep, two appointments to consider. One is Ralph Diddy as the backup wire and inspector, inspector for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand twenty seven.
So, yeah. I move approval of that.
Okay, Paul moves. Now a second. Before I collect the vote, ask a quick question. I see you assign Daddy Electric. Um, is this related to, is he, does he own Daddy Electric?
He does, yeah. Whether, I always thought that was a funny name, uh, for electric, but I think, do his parents live in Sherburne, I believe?
Yes.
I forget the last name.
The relationship, but.
Yeah, he's from Sherburne.
Go ahead, Genie. Genie knows everything.
It's, it's Ralph Eady and it's the electric and he, he living, he grew up in Sherburne.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think his mother lived on Harrington Ridge.
It's, it's a nice name, but if you add an L, then it doesn't, it's a bad sales pitch. If you add an L, second plus letter, it's a bad sales pitch. All right, all that being said, um, I believe Jeff nomination, uh, someone seconded, I think, all in favor, uh, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Might as well. Okay, next one, public safety committee. Uh, Jackie, do you have something before we collect this vote?
No, sorry, I'm after, after, sorry, sorry about that.
Next is to consideration, uh, consider the appointment of Frank Jenkins to the public safety committee. Uh, I believe he would be the traffic safety committee member of the public safety committee. For a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand twenty seven.
Move approval.
And.
Second.
Second, oh, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
I think that's I, uh, Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well, and I would like to thank the both. Okay, um, moving on. Oh wait, um, Jackie, did you wanna comment something?
Yeah, I, I apologize for this, but the, the more I look at this warrant, I was wondering if there's any way that you guys could. Vote for me to add yes or no to question six. Even though there's no description, I didn't put that on there and I'm feeling like it should be, it should. So what exactly, I have no.
Are you allowed to change it?
No, if you look at the ballot, there is no, there is no explanation of what a yes or no is. But I just left off the words yes and no off the warrant. Um.
So I'm.
I just feel like yes and no should be on the warrant. There is no explanation of what yes or no is like the questions one through five.
So I move that we reconsider her vote on the. Issuance of the town election warrant.
I second, let's get the language right.
Just to confirm, this motion is just to reconsider, it's not to actually make the change, correct, Paul?
Right, just open the subject up.
Yep, I get it. All right, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Right.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, we're back, we're back on that agenda item now.
So I, yeah, so just if you could just um. Uh, approve adding yes or no to question six on the warrant after the summary. That's all, that's all I need.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Just looking at this one second. So. Yeah, we won't have a what is vote means, what an open step thing, it's just yes or no?
There is no yes or no explanation on the ballot. It just says yes or no, and I left that off and I feel like it should be on the warrant.
Are you talking about an explanation of what yes means?
No.
No, 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 not talking about that. I, I was asking, I'm reading it again, but okay.
Okay, that would help.
Motion in a second to add yes and no, uh, um, someone seconded, right?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, okay. All in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Right.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well.
Thank you.
And just one further technical motion, which is the vote to approve the issuance of the. Election warrant as amended.
Second.
All in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, very good. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And then moving on to consent agenda, um, any motions? Well, to the consent agenda.
Well, I have a, an edit that um. To one of the minutes and. I talked to Diane about it and she said. That if I made a motion to approve. To accept the consent agenda with. The amendment. She would make the amendment later. So. What I'd like to do is explain the amendment. It's to the minutes of. Second set of minutes, September five, I believe it is. Yes. There was a, a motion to amend the agenda made by me. That one day liquor license and to move the consent agenda to item two right after the ever source poll hearing. That wasn't the motion I made. I, I, the motion I made was to approve the agenda with two amendments. The, the two amendments being the two items I just mentioned. Otherwise, the agenda was never approved, never voted. So this is just a technical change. It's just going to add the words most. Move to approve the agenda. As submitted with two amendments. And then the amendments are in the minutes. So she said if I made that motion, she would fix the minutes, but she agreed with that. That arrow she would fix. Later, cause she's in Canada, so she couldn't send it out to everybody. So that's the motion I wanna make, which is to approve the. The, the consent agenda. But with respect to the minutes of September five. To add the amendment just discussed.
So I, I, I guess second your um motion, I guess, you call it a motion?
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah, I second the uh motion to uh amend the minutes.
And, and to approve the consent agenda with that modification, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's open approve the consent agenda. All in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Marion?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
All right, I might as well. Okay, moving on, uh, select board reports. So any select board members have a report?
Uh, we're lucky on Sherbstock. We rallied, Merlinda O'Neil did. We, we lost our biggest food truck for Sherbstock Friday morning a week ago. And they landed another one Friday afternoon and we. Were, I was on the phone with the Board of Health at eight AM.
Who's, who's the new food?
Monday morning to get them to rapidly approve the new food truck. And it wasn't.
Food truck was in the parking lot being inspected.
Yeah, it was, it, they're, they're gonna have the inspector there, but it wasn't like the popcorn person. It was the like main uh entree type food truck. So they had to scramble and come up with a new one at the last minute, so that was a little bit of.
Wait, sorry, so what's the new food truck?
I can't remember, but it's, it was one that replaced one that backed out at the last minute.
Okay.
It's a good thing we got one, so we just.
They had ten or eleven food trucks.
My only thing was just, uh, you know, I had a. Quick conversation with um Bob Murchison, who is uh anxious to get a meeting scheduled. Um. So I didn't, I don't know if it was appropriate for us to discuss that in a select board report, but. In a, in an attempt to efficiently get that meeting scheduled, I didn't know if uh. I guess it's up to your discretion, Eric, whether it's appropriate for us to, to, to try to set that meeting.
Scheduling a meeting is, that's actually fine. You know, we voted on meetings, you can, it's a one option, one of the exemptions of the meeting law, you can always schedule a meeting. And I, I think it's appropriate to discuss that now to figure out. I, and people know like, you know, Stephen's gonna be taking over the lead when it comes to things with the Coolidge Corner, which this basically would involve that. I probably would not attend the meeting. Um, Steve will choose meetings that, you know, heavily involve the water district and, and, and stuff like that, um, which this would do, so. Um. Anyways, uh, Jeff, you have something?
Yeah, I have a pretty strong uh. Condition on this, which is I do not believe this should be a select board meeting. I believe it should be a public hearing. We're not voting on anything that I know of unless you can tell me differently. So I don't view this as a select board meeting. The select board can post it as a meeting. So we're able to speak during the session. It will, will be in session. But I don't view it as a select board meeting where we're gonna take a vote on anything. So I think it should be a public meeting. Um, which we post only so that we can speak if there's three or more of us there.
Uh, could, could you explain a little bit of what kind of meeting? Bob is looking for and.
Let me.
All right.
This, uh, Jeff used the term public hearing. It's not your public hearing. Public hearing has defined definition of butter notices and stuff like that. I think it means like more presentation.
I don't know that, well, we've had public, maybe the word hearing isn't word. We'd have public presentations before. In fact, Bob gave one, I think, uh, when we were in a hybrid session. Um, but I, my only point is this is, to me, is not an agenda item for a select board meeting because we're not. Approving anything. And I think it, the problem is, I feel that it sort of uh. Makes it appear as if the select board has already uh supported this initiative, which we haven't.
But I guess. Devil's advocate, is there another mechanism to create a public meeting? You just wanna create a public meeting?
Yeah.
About a meeting which will continue the conversation that we had before. Um. Add more specifics to it. What other mechanism is there to do that? You know, usually it's somebody, someone has to take ownership of it. We are the executive board of the town. We actually don't have as much authority as, let's say, Board of Health or whatever these other, you know, um, Conservation Commission. Seems less appropriate that they would actually hold something like this, the regulatory boards. I guess I'll throw it out there.
I think there's a way to have, maybe Jeremy will know. It's a public presentation for the town to hear, but it's not being sponsored by any board in my view.
And I would like to note, Eric, exactly what's the subject? Does he wanna? Continue his talk about his global plan? What is he asking for here? I mean, I don't think it's, I mean, I don't think it's appropriate. In this case, maybe it is, but you could correct me, but. For us to call a special meeting. Uh, just because he, he wants it as a, as a platform. And I think he's gotta have some purpose for the meeting in mind. And then we can decide, you know, how to proceed.
Well, to be fair, Marion, I, I believe we, we sort of told him that we would have a second meeting. I mean. You remember whatever it was a month ago, we had the meeting where he did his presentation. And we were very clear that we were not discussing and deliberating on his proposal and. We also didn't want the other boards and committees um that were present to be. Sort of discussing and deliberating. People could ask clarifying questions, but we kind of made it clear that we wanted to see the presentation. Have some time for those other boards to meet and discuss if they wanted to, and then have a second meeting where. Um, everybody would be free to actually discuss the proposal and, you know, you know. Leverage their criticisms or their support or ask more questions or whatever. So essentially. This is that second meeting that we, you know, basically promised him.
Okay, that, that's clearer then, thanks. I wasn't sure about that because.
Yeah, cause I think we wanna invite the other boards and committees to be present. They can, uh, you know, um. Post meetings for that same uh, same night, and then that way they are all free to discuss and deliberate. You know. About, about the proposal.
Can deliberate, but it's not on an agenda of any of the boards, is my point.
And he, he has changed his global.
You're posting a meeting so we can attend, but we're not posting it as a select board meeting is my strong preference.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I, I guess my, my opinion would be that we are the, we are the highest executive uh.
And we're not making a decision on anything.
Yeah, but I, I think as the executive body, we are allowed to say, we're gonna have a meeting now. We don't, we, we often have agenda items in our. You know, in our meetings where we don't take a vote on it, you know, and uh.
But I, I'm opposed to the way you described it completely.
I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm open to an alternate, I mean, what's, what's an alternate way to make it happen?
Well, could we uh? Could we uh allow a, a public forum? Say, uh, hybrid in person and, and on Zoom or something for the whole town to. Listen, it is, but that's, it's kind of a free for all, you know? I'm afraid it's gonna be kind of a free for all anyway, but.
Yeah, but, right, somebody's gotta be in charge of the meeting, right? Someone's gotta moderate the meeting.
Yeah, somebody's gotta moderate it.
So.
Like to hear what Jeremy has to say, cause he might have an idea.
I, I have an idea, but I mean, there's a good point that just was raised. Somebody needs to moderate the meeting, but. Um. You, you know, it, maybe it's a, a public forum. You know, hosted by the town administrator in which the board of selectmen attend and you post that you're in attendance. But. That doesn't get you to the point of, you know, who's moderating your meeting. But I, I think, you know, we, we can certainly host a meeting, invite other media, uh, boards there and committees. The select board would just post a meeting to be in attendance at. This hosted public meeting. Um, but.
You could technically, you could technically ask Mike Jaimo to chair it. He, he's actually our town moderator.
Good idea.
Or I think, is he official? I know he volunteered. I think he's a moderator, isn't he now?
Yes.
I've already attended a meeting with him, yeah, with the, um. Again, I'm my, and I'm, I'm gonna be at the meeting, but I just kinda go back to what Stephen said before. We did. Tell them we'll do a second meeting, so. I don't know how much you wanna get caught up into the nuances of whose meeting it is, but we did tell them to do a second meeting, so. That obligation's out there.
Well.
I don't think it really matters as a select board, cause we did the first one. We hosted the first one, we did it, we said we'd do a second. You know, I mean, it's not exactly on. You can precedent or breaking rules or anything like that.
I think it sends the wrong message. Bob obviously wants us to approve elect. Lip, whatever it's called. And so we don't wanna.
Lip.
Lip, whatever you wanna call it. So we don't want to. Have any implication in the meeting that we're advocating or deciding anything yet, cause we're not, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I have the same concern, you know, and hi- his, his global plan is. No longer the same global plan he presented the first time. And I can see this going on and on, you know? Um, I think to some degree, uh. You know, he, he appreciates having a platform.
Let, let's just keep it focused on whether you, you're scheduling a meeting or not.
Yeah.
Substance.
Okay.
Avoid.
Yep.
Well, except we have to decide what the meeting is that we're deciding on, in other words.
Agreed.
We were starting to give an opinion about his motivations, that, that's inappropriate, so.
You're right, but uh, that wasn't, that was not appropriate. Uh, but. It is good to consider. But it is good to consider, you know, what the select board goal would be in this meeting if we're going to organize it. And I think we need to talk about that a little bit.
My goal is to foster discussion and invite input from all of the other, uh, you know, town boards and other members of the public that might have an, I'm sure, I'm sure members of the public have an opinion and uh want to say something, right? I mean, I mean, at the end of the day, it's like, yes, I think that what it is is a public forum, right? But still, just the mechanics of it is that somebody has to set up the meeting and somebody has to announce the meeting and somebody has to run the meeting, right?
Remember when, but we've had public meetings before that weren't there might have been a moderator, but they weren't a official meeting of any board in town, I believe. We've had.
How does that work?
Who run the one? In fact, you spoke out a little bit, Steve. You had a, you had a great comment on um. It was on Valentine's Day. It was about the the development of downtown there. Remember that? That was a live meeting. It was in the big room. Who ran that?
True, that was a, yeah. I don't remember who was in charge of that meeting. I just attended as a resident, you know, just to watch uh watch what was gonna happen.
We've I we've definitely done this, but not recently. We've had, I think we let um maybe what's his name, Ben Stevens, give one a public hearing at some point. We've done it. Okay, not often, but occasionally. It's just not in and I I'm not supportive of a improntor of it being a meeting of a decision-making authority.
So then do we at least have to authorize the use of Town Hall or such meeting?
I don't I don't know. You're you're way over my head now. It's a good, I'm I'm not, it's I'm not being critical. It's a good question. I don't know the answer though.
Well, if it were a public forum, you're right, Steve, that we did promise to do this. But if it were a public forum organized by the select board, it sounds like that would fulfill our promise, but not not invoke an expectation of any kind of vote or.
Except for the words uh uh coordinated by the select board. It can just be coordinated by the town administrator as a town meeting. That was how, not by the select board.
So Jeremy will run it. He'll recognize people as they come up, just like whatever and.
Jeremy could ask or or request Mike Jaimo as town moderator to to run the meeting. It's a, it's not, because who's gonna post the agenda? It's not gonna, there isn't gonna be an agenda for other than a public meeting, I think. That's what, at least my preference.
Well, each board will probably have their own kind of, each board's gonna say attending this meeting, attending this meeting. There'll be a number of boards there. They're gonna have to call the order.
Just like we do when we we open a session when we attend a ZBA hearing. If there's three of us there, yeah.
Um, I guess I would ask Jeremy, what is your opinion on the direction this is going? And then also I would like to hear Paul's opinion as to sort of in terms of the municipal gears turning, how how this sounds.
Paul, Paul, you want to go first?
No, let's hear what you have to say. We probably have the solution.
So I think I I think it could work by having I mean, I've seen in other communities where meetings of this sort have been, you know, essentially hosted by a developer. Um and and boards and committees have have met during it and they post so that they can have discussions. So you know, that it is done where there's there's public presentations that boards and committees attend and post as yeah, as a meeting for compliance with the overall meeting law, so that you could discuss at at, you know, your discretion, what you need to discuss. So it's it's done. Um, I mean, I think I'd prefer not it it I think it'd be more preferable to have um someone other than myself moderate the meeting, but um I'm happy to help organize it.
Well, Mike Chimo's a realist, Mike Chimo's day job is a real estate partner at a major Boston office.
Do we know how uh up to speed Mike is on? You know, Bob Murchison's various projects, though?
Yeah, that that was my question too. I think.
Cause he he might not want to moderate it if he doesn't know a lot about what's going on.
That would be better, because he wouldn't be biased in any direction.
Just needs to help keep them moderate the meeting, keep it civil, keep it moving. I guess my question, if you know, the currently October fifteenth is put out as a poten- potential date. Is that convenient for you folks?
It works for me.
Not not for me.
Is that one of our regular days, uh, meeting days?
No, that's a Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
I have a town meeting, special fall town meeting that they.
Is there a date? Paul, is there, you you seem to want be the one that has the most schedule restrictions. So is there a date that week that works for you?
The week of the fourteenth.
Correct.
Wednesday, the sixteenth.
That works for me. How about everyone else?
That works for me. That would be a regular Board of Health meeting day.
Oh, wait, I can't do, I have to be on Antica. I gotta hearing. Does it have to be that week?
I believe that, I believe that Bob is very anxious to get this done within the next week or two.
Next week, I'm not available.
Right, that's why we shifted to the week after.
Well, and Monday's a holiday in that week. Technically, that's Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Columbus Day for those who are of Italian descent.
Yeah, that's why um Italy uh kicked them out and Spain had to contract them to go to India. I'll leave my opinion in Columbus.
Every day that week is is a problem for me.
I need to.
I mean, I I guess if.
We were here before anybody else, so yeah.
I mean, i- if we're pitching this as not a select board meeting and it's just a public forum.
We don't want you all be there.
Does everybody need to be there?
Actually, with me out, there's two more people out and then you don't have to post anything.
Well, I'd like to be there, but.
I mean, I I guess we have to weigh uh your schedule, Paul, against uh the sort of needs and desires of a developer who, you know, we we have been at least in conversation with for the past several months, if not years about this, some version of these developments and uh.
I agree, Steve, but I think we should pick a day where we uh are pretty sure that Board of Health would be able to and people on other committees that are like land development committees.
I think that's why we can go to Tuesday, the fifteenth. Because uh, I mean, at least I know Board of Health meets on Wednesdays, Conservation meets on um Thursdays. ZBA doesn't have a specific date that they meet on, but I'm not currently, there's no ZBA meeting uh scheduled for that date.
That's right, the fifteenth would regularly be a planning board day.
Well, how long do you think we expect the presentation to be, like forty-five minutes or do we know?
Uh, we don't know.
Because it could be, you know, something that they then have a meeting after that or something. If they're like, say, the planning board wants to meet, they would probably want to sit it on this. So if we met at seven, they could have their meeting starting at eight or something on that night. Unless they have a packed agenda.
I doubt that it would be limited to an hour, honestly, Jeff.
Okay.
So uh I understand he'd like to have it sooner rather than later, but um the following week might be easier for everybody.
The ZBA meets on the twenty-second, that Tuesday.
Oh, right, okay.
Do we know the the twenty-third?
I'm available on the twenty-third.
Is that the Board of Health, do they meet every other week?
Every other week. No, actually, they're a weird one. They meet um
The first and third.
Meet the twice a month.
The first and third Wednesday of them.
And third, so twenty-third, there should not be a Board of Health meeting.
You're right.
And so planning is Tuesdays, Conservation is Thursdays, ZBA is meeting Tuesday that week, so.
Wednesday that I know of is advisory usually meets on Wednesdays, don't they?
Yes.
I don't know if you need to be at this one or not.
Yeah, I think advisory is likely to meet on October sixteenth, but not on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Well, I suggest that we suggest to Bob Murchison a a uh a public forum.
On the twenty-third?
Everyone on the twenty-third.
Okay, so essentially we'll s- I'm gonna float October twenty-third to him with the setup being that this is a public forum not being sponsored by any specific town committee. And we still need to work out the mechanism for who is going to run and moderate the meeting.
That sounds fair.
Okay.
Two possibilities could be Mike Jaimo, but I think hasn't Rick Novak officially stepped down from the ZBA now? Is he off ZBA?
No, he's an associate member, so he's still.
Be a good moderator too, but not if he's on ZBA probably.
Uh, that that said, I think it is good to have a moderator that has a little bit of background on what posing, and I'm not sure if Mike Jaimo does, but we could check.
Well, he he was on the select board for a long time and he's a real estate attorney. I don't know what.
Right, but I mean, he was.
You're already with this project. He's just moderating the discussion now.
Maybe that's better.
I was gonna say, it actually might be better.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
All right, um Jeremy, do you want to contact uh Mike and see if he would be willing and available on October twenty-third? And would we do this as a hybrid meeting in Town Hall?
We could, I don't know.
We could. I mean, I'm I'm wondering if Zoom might not actually work better for this. You know, the hybrid meetings are a little tricky. When there's a a screen and not everyone can see everyone quite.
Well, we could always leave it up to Bob and uh Mike Giamo if he agrees to do it and they can be the ones that decide what uh format they would prefer it to be in.
Sure.
It's not a bad idea.
Okay.
All right, so Jeremy, would you be able, because um I'm pretty sure that every single day I'm going to get a text from Bob asking me um of what the status of the meeting is, so would you be able to get in touch with um Mike? Uh, well, try to get in touch with him tomorrow and then uh let me know if he agrees to do it and then that way I can give Bob more specifics as to um when, when and who.
I I can text you, I may text you his mobile number. I have his mobile number.
Yeah, sure, I I.
I'll just rather than doing it. I'll text you his um personal email, Gmail account and his mobile number after the meeting.
Actually, I think I might have it, but go ahead, Jeff. Yeah, because I've.
I'll just text those two things to you.
And I'll get right on that, Steve.
Thank you, Jeremy.
All right. And then assume there's no more select board reports after that. Administrator reports and hopefully Jeremy has the Cliff Notes.
Try to be quick, but wanted to give you some updates. There's been a been a lot going on um entering in the fall. Update on the Sherburne History Center and Museum. Uh, we're at the uh tail end of a quality bet based uh selection process to select an architect for that space. Uh, we got a a great response, eight different proposals and and consultant groups. Uh, the working group um held an interview, uh two interviews with with design teams and we've uh chosen a our our number one. We had to rank them and we've chosen our number one uh preference and are currently negotiating contracts uh with that team. Uh, once we have uh successfully negotiated, I'll let you know who that is. And uh but we're we're excited um about um about that team. Uh, an update on the PFAS and water treatment at town buildings and the town meeting appropriation to to do the engineering. Uh, we uh have selected through an RFP process, a proposal process, Pusson O'Neill to to help us with that uh engineering effort. They put together a thoughtful proposal that um that Sean and I have reviewed um and had some discussions with them about. We think it's a a great approach to to the problem. They'll be looking at the Town Hall Campus Water Supply, the Pine Hill School Water Supply, Woodhaven Elder Housing, Leland Farms, that that combined system and Fire Station One. Uh, so their their proposal within the the budget that we've uh have appropriations for from town meeting will be looking at all of those sites. They've uh coordinated with DEP and have gotten sort of sort of a preliminary approval uh for the typically the approval of water treatment involves a full-scale demonstration, which is outside of what you finally install. Uh, but DEP is is willing for us to actually do the installation that may become the permanent and use that as your pilot. Uh, and then over the course of a year, uh while it's actually doing your water treatment, um at the end of that, if it's performing the way it's supposed to, they'll give the final approval. So I think it's a very efficient way to do this. And actually, one of the most rapid ways to get water treatment installed at the town campus and and at at Pine Hill. And with this approach, we would have water treatment installed shortly after we have construction funding available. Uh, which Pusson O'Neill will help us develop a number four to bring to town meeting in the spring. But this summer, we could have water treatment installed and operating for the removal of PFAS at Town Hall Campus, Pine Hill School and the Fire Station One. The Woodhaven Elder Housing, Leland Farms is a slightly different approach in that we have the other water uh quality treatment that we're installing for the the corros- corrosivity of the water. That is through some membrane treatment, which actually may remove PFAS. So we need to get those things installed to give that a chance to to run for a bit. Pusson O'Neill will help us um study how that's operating and come up with a proposal if we need to do any additional treatment for what they meant. Uh, so I think that it's 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 a good approach and uh pretty timely. Let's see, we have a uh as far as Woodhaven, Leland Farms Water System, we're gonna give the Elder Housing Committee an update on that project their next meeting. Uh, before the winter, we'll have in addition to the exterior shed where the water treatment is constructed and a number of the things in that building uh in place. And early next spring, we'll actually do the the exterior piping uh connecting the water systems. Uh, but this has been been good movement on that project. The Route twenty-seven and Route sixteen study and design. Uh, the Boston NPO uh gave us some guidance uh this week. The federal fiscal year is is open as of October first, so that the funds are available from the Boston NPO. They've given us guidance on how to select a consultant. We have to do a full quality-based selection process, which is not typically the way you would need to do a transportation project, but because it has federal funding through the tip. We have to do a full quality-based selection. So we have advertised and have that out on the street. I'll have to issue an addendum tomorrow to to make sure that we're doing a full quality-based selection. And that will be considering and negotiating a contract after we select based on quality.
So good question on that. It's not like the uh MGL four, so I can't remember what it is, where actually you actually have the fee or a fee not to exceed and it's quality-based? So there's no fee.
A wider selection for architects for for vertical. It it's fully quality-based. It's it's a federal requirement, not a state requirement.
But eve- even the RFQs are are whatever um for for was it MGL four or seven? I mixed the one. The ones required for vertical still have. vertical, still have like a, uh, the fixed fee stated and it's quality-based, or it's a fixed fee not to exceed. I thought those are in there, still not, not price considered, like, don't submit prices, don't say we can do it for this much, or here's our billing rate or anything else like that. It's basically, so you, there's no fee at all, there's no like similar, again, to, for vertical construction.
So that's what we put on the street was the, the method you described, Eric, but from the, the guidance we got from the MPO at their, uh, at a session earlier this week, they said it needs to be fully quality-based. So we'll, we're able to just, we can modify the due date and give some more time to the consultants and make it fully quality-based. Then we negotiate a contract after.
No, I get it, it's a take time, cause if someone can't come to a price that we need, ultimately, we have a budget and it's gonna be like this.
There's been a lot of interest and we'll go on, we can't come to agreement on the, the number one, we'll go on to the next.
Yep. All right.
Uh, Jeremy, could I ask a question about that? About being fully quality-based, that means that you, you evaluate, pick the best person, the best contractor or whatever. Um, but can you have a priority list of contractors, so you don't have to go through the whole quality-based evaluation, starting from scratch again?
It needs to be publicly advertised, which it has been in the central register and any firm that is, I mean, we have requirements that they be pre-qualified with Mast DOT and have a certain level of experience uh, on these same type of projects, so there's a, there's a, you know, uh, they need to be responsive to, to that. Uh, but otherwise, anybody that believes they're, are responsive can respond.
And quality-based, I guess I don't know quite what metrics that implies.
We have to come up with, um, a quality-based selection process, so our, our working group that would be hel- helping decide on who um, gives the best quality and, and understands the project the best, who needs to come up with some um, some, some markers to, and, and does some vetting and has a, a basis for what they consider the, the highest quality or the best contractor.
Oh, so that.
Experience, maybe the design team, their understanding of the project, the ability to meet the schedule and then, you know, rank them, uh, on a scale.
Right, and it's you or the, the town that sets those
correct.
Priorities.
That, and we need to score everybody that, in using the same metrics uh, on some scale, on a quality-based scale.
Right, so you make your quality-based scale in advance.
We may come up with maybe three teams that we believe are, are the top and then interview those three teams and then come up with a final selection after that.
Okay.
And then we can negotiate a price.
And, and to whatever extent, I'd like to be on whatever, um, um, consultant selecting team on that there, just my experience with it, you know, doing it.
Really. So preliminarily, Eric, um, you know, yourself, myself, Sean, Heidi, uh, and Addie May have been sort of involved, um, I've solicited, um, Marion's advice as well. Um, Marion, you're welcome to be on the committee as well for this election.
Okay, well, y- you know, I can talk to you and see if I would add anything that you don't already have.
I think that's a pretty good size there, I don't know if we wanna go much larger than that.
No, but I'm, I'm willing to, you know, step aside for someone who's more qualified, but, you know, I always have an opinion, that helps.
I think you're very qualified and, and a lot of this is based on, uh, the town's master plan and vision for town center, so that, that's a great perspective you'll bring. Um, I guess my final two updates, um, we've started a land use department coordination meeting, um, it's every other week on Wednesdays, we've had three or four now, uh, with the hopes to, to sort of help coordinate the actions and, and work of all the land use folks, um, Board of Health, Conservation Planning, Building, uh, and now that we've got Chris back and, and more staffing growing there. Um, it was timely to do that, so I think that's starting to bear some fruits and, and raise some things up and, and help with teamwork and collaboration between the departments. Uh, I think there's a lot of things we can talk about as far as process and also just specific projects and where they're at in, during that meeting, so it's a time that we've all set aside on a Wednesday afternoon to, to make sure we get together and, uh, keep each other informed of what's going on. Uh, and final update is, uh, I hope to see everybody at Sherp Stock, uh, we have a, a municipal table that we'll be setting up, a pop-up tent, we have a table. A lot of the department heads and other folks have given me things to put on there and a lot will be mingling around with us. Uh, and welcome all of you to, to stop by and um, hang out with us.
Uh, Jeremy, as long as we have you here, I'd, I'd like to ask you, I have a, a couple of things for Open Space Committee. They'd like to put up, you know, small like posters that stand on the table that are really nice pictures, so I was going to come early, you know, and try to drop them off, but, uh, what, what's the best way to actually physically do that?
I would, I've, I've got a cart here that I've been in my office that I got a bunch of stuff on, we've got several tables, we got some table cloths, nice green table cloths. Sean's gonna help put up a pop-up tent and see him tune right in, I think he might be offering some assistance.
Um, so I can pull up early in the morning and get stuff unloaded?
Yeah.
At, at the Sherp Stock?
Shurps, I mean, I think like eight AM, you might be able to get access any, anytime too much after that.
Eight, eight or nine.
Everything else might be tough to get at. Sure, any thoughts? I see, you turned your, your video on.
That sounds right, son.
I'm.
Yeah, unless you wanna get it to me and Addie May tomorrow. Are you around tomorrow?
Uh, I could, yeah, but I can, you know, it's just stuff to go under the tent, it's not it's not a lot, and I know, uh, we talked about maybe having some of the excess master plans and open space plans out there to give away.
We've got a couple of boxes already put on the cart, Marion.
Okay.
There's a ton of open space and, and the master plan stuff in the basement, so I think we'll be happy to, to give them out if anybody's interested. I got a couple of boxes.
Don't start by giving away, start by charging ten dollars and then maybe by two o'clock, you can keep cutting the price.
And can I ask a really stupid question? We are not in the parade, right, the select board?
Not that I know of, I, I.
Actually, you're, you're marching in the front.
Well, I am, I'm.
I was planning on watching the parade, but then somebody was like, aren't you marching in the parade? I was like, I don't think so.
You can ride in one of Sean's trucks if you want it.
I'm marching with the Boy Scouts, cause I'm still Chair of the Troop Committee for the Boy Scouts.
Oh.
And Melinda O'Neill was really one of the primary organizers and her husband John is the uh, Scout Master of the Boy Scout troop.
Yeah, if anyone wants to ride in a DPW truck, I'm sure Zach would offer the same in a fire truck, you're more than welcome.
All right. We've come to the end of the agenda, as much as I can't believe when it went by so quickly, I feel. All right. Um, do I have any motions relative to this agenda? Yeah, Paul?
Can I move to adjourn?
Yes, you can, absolutely.
I'll second with one other note, the, um, northern lights are gonna be visible tonight through Saturday night between ten and two AM.
Oh, wow, really?
Really?
Yeah.
Tonight and Saturday?
Yeah, depending on the cloud level tonight, but from tonight, Thursday night through and including Saturday night, it should be visible from ten PM to two AM.
Okay. Well, that's only a half hour from now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I was, it's actually a new moon tonight too, you know, so it makes it especially, probably one of the reasons it's visible, cause it's a new moon.
Yeah.
I was gonna have a way to look, but I'm gonna bet you it's north. Bet you have to.
Look at Finland. Thanks, guys.
On one side you get, on the other side you get Southern Comfort, all right? Um, wait, a motion, and do we have a second? Someone second it, right, all in favor, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, I am nay, all right, everyone have a good one.
Ciao, guys, thank you.
Bye.